We're going to call to order the October 5th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Agency, the Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by Ms. Lynn Arner.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding negotiations with the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, personal number noted in the agenda, and to confer with our legal counsel regarding one item of substantial exposure to litigation. No action was taken. That brings us to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, the council is precluded by state law from voting or having a discussion about items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We ask that anyone wishing to address the council on item 1A or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and so to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that simply indicates which agenda item we're currently considering. We take the yellow cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. So if you're here to speak on agenda item 11 or 12, just be sure to turn in your speaking card before the staff has completed their report on that agenda item. Once the council questions and discussion and the public testimony have begun, we don't take any additional speaking requests. We also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can cause anxiety and hives and all sorts of other bad things, and so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or even any applause or other demonstrations, and we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have no request to speak under item 1A, so we're going to proceed to item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mayor Protam Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Port Commission met earlier tonight, and we approved a budget appropriation for technical consultation services related to Phase 2 of the Yolo Real Realignment Project, and we also approved an exclusive negotiating agreement between the Port and Ranch Capital LLC for purchase and development of the Barge Canal property. I also participated in a Yolo-Lafco organized summit on sustainable transportation in Yolo County last week, and we heard speakers from UC Davis, Caltrans, Yolo County Secog, and Yolo County Transportation District. Our city manager also presented an update of our city's transportation plan and the state of our roads and funding issues related to our roads, and several West Sac staff members participated, including our fire chief and director of Public Works. I also attended, the same day in the morning, the Business Journal's Best of Real Estate Projects Breakfast Program, and two West Sac projects were recognized. The Park Moderns and Habitat received the best residential project of the year, and the Washington Firehouse received the best adaptive reuse project of the year. The city of West Sacramento also received commendations from both project leaders and for support and staffing excellence of our city team and for our council's vision. So we were called out. It was a really proud moment. Actually, of the nine projects, four actually were in Yolo County and two were here in West Sacramento. And then, just like a week and a half ago, Councilmember Johansson and I both attended the Tower Bridge Dinner, and another proud time for West Sacramento. There were two chefs that, I think, presented appetizers at the big event, Ernesto Delgado and Chris D'Arroz. I always say his name wrong. What is it? How do you say it?
Yarros.
Yarros, yarros. I need help with his name. And then, two of our farmers, the Watanabe's, not Watanabe's, and also Del Rio Botanical, they also provided produce for the evening, and then two of our breweries, Yolo Brewing Company and Jack Rabbit. So we had, West Sacramento was nicely represented there. And then finally, on Monday, I participated in a discussion regarding Yolo County Champions for Children's Agenda, along with Lynn Arner of our Up for West Sac team, and then our first five representative, Francisco Castillo, who co-led the discussion. And we discussed the need for more funding for first five programs and services generally, but we also, and we also spoke with potential funders as kind of a first step to talk about programming for early education and preschool in the county. And representatives from Yolo County, all the school districts, the cities, the Yotzadehe, Wanta Nation, corporations and foundations, all participated in the roundtable discussion. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other reports this evening? I had two. First, at the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, we announced last week the appointment of our new chief executive officer and executive director, and I think I mentioned this at our last meeting as well, James Corliss from Transportation for America will be starting in April as the new CEO for the regional organization, so we're very excited about that appointment. And then, last week, I was at the leadership meeting for the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Oklahoma City, and a couple of key items from that meeting, we had an extensive working session on autonomous vehicles in cities and certainly some of the implications, but also some of the design and planning, infrastructure and finance considerations to be dealt with. And we've talked about this fairly extensively at the council, you know, and off and on in our innovation discussion and the charter discussion and in the general plan review as well, but actually a very useful session with the folks from the Department, the U.S. Department of Transportation just released their guidance on autonomous vehicles, and we also had Selita Reynolds, who's the head of the L.A. Department of Transportation, and they're quite far along in their, in their planning. The, I guess, one of the constant questions that kept coming up from my colleagues around the rest of the country were, so when is, when is this happening? When are autonomous vehicles coming? And, you know, is that going to be in 2022 or in 2020? You can imagine my answer was, they're already here. You know, that we have, they started with cruise control, but there are plenty of vehicles that are already largely autonomous on the roads today, and that's coming even further. That prompted the L.A. General Manager to point out that there's a raging debate about, which I was unaware, that the council might be interested in, between, around whether or not to focus on the incremental build towards autonomous vehicles, which is the trajectory that we're largely on, and that companies like Tesla and many of the major auto companies are focused on, or the leap immediately to what we're called Level 4 autonomous vehicles, so those vehicles that don't require a driver, don't anticipate the availability of a driver at all, whereas a Level 3 autonomous vehicle doesn't require a driver, but in the event that something goes wrong, it can alert the driver and the driver takes control, and there is, but there, which is the preferred approach for the auto companies. They have widely different implications for safety and also around, well, could you, could you actually count on the human being at that point who's now disengaged? But the implications that we've talked about for parking and for street width are, were certainly highlighted, and for decisions around road widenings and what to do when you're doing road repavings for markers in the road that can assist with the regulatory of autonomous vehicles, and also the ideal areas to begin now with autonomous vehicles, the ideal neighborhood types and places to focus on. So some guidance around how cities and their, and their general planning processes could identify areas that are more appropriate than others for different kinds of autonomous vehicles, with the recognition, and I think this was universal across all of, all of the experts that we heard from, that it's, there's, there's really no question that it's an inevitable change, and an inevitable change very fast, you know, with, certainly within this deck, within, within the, within the, whatever this is called, the teens. And we would ignore it at our peril, and particularly a lot of our financing mechanisms and infrastructure financing and other sorts of things that we have not paid attention to mostly are also going to have to be on the table. So the, so, and I should say, the last piece of it was the workforce implications. We've talked about, wouldn't it be great if you didn't need parking spaces and, and if, you know, and some of the implications around transit, but the potential, you know, utter disruption of the, of jobs for taxi drivers, to be sure, but parking lot attendants, truck drivers, bus drivers, large, large swaths of job classifications all at once, in addition to creating, you know, lots and lots and lots of jobs in the technology and engineering and other sorts of things as well, but the, but the amount of disruption could make the whole Uber era, you know, seem like it was smooth and easy. So, so since I chaired the jobs committee for the, for the Conference of Mayors, I'm going to be part of a national task force on trying to come up with some best practices and, and guidance for cities, but also then recommendations to Congress and to the next administration around what cities need in order to effectively adapt and where we're going to need some support, frankly, from, from higher levels of government, and also, because the federal government's particularly interested in making sure that an autonomous vehicle that works and functions in California or in West Sacramento can just as, can, can not have to worry about crossing over into Davis or, or Nevada and not, and no longer, no longer be legal. And so there's definitely an interest in starting to harmonize from the beginning some of the regulatory regimes. So, long report, but that was a, it's a very significant issue and one that was a high, a big focus of the Conference of Mayors. The other one I wanted to highlight, although we also heard from the presidential campaigns and had some extensive work that we were doing on water, water quality and wastewater systems, the other major issue is flood, and I pushed pretty hard and got agreement from the mayors that we will, as the, for their support on our, what we're trying to do with respect to the Water Resources Development Act in terms of the authorizations of projects that have a chief's report complete, like ours, in addition to some of the issues around the FEMA. FEMA has recently released some proposed regulations and proposed rulemaking, and it is, I think the whole council was, I think you were here, Mayor Protam Sandin, with this, at least in the last round of this issue around floodplain management. Just to recall, the Nixon administration had issued an executive order that said that federal agencies were not to make investments, federal investments, in floodplains. I'm putting it grossly, but that's pretty much what it said, and that's a ridiculous public policy, given that the large, a large proportion of America's population, in particular the city populations, is in floodplains. So it was never really implemented in that when President Obama came into office, the White House issued an order reviving that executive order essentially. We cried pretty loudly and also engaged the U.S. Conference of Mayors and other partners, and they pulled that back. The White House pulled that back and, and agreed to take another look at the trade-offs associated with saying no investment in floodplains, and there have been an interagency task force with FEMA and the Corps of Engineers and Homeland Security and us and at the Conference of Mayors and others trying to work through these issues. FEMA, a month, a month and a half ago, released its proposed rulemaking on its portion of that executive order that, at least in my view, it still goes too far in terms of saying that we're, it's sort of informed by this idea that, wouldn't it be great if people just didn't live in floodplains, and therefore, we can reduce flood risk, we can reduce flood risk to human life if we just ignore that people live there now and create all the incentives for them not to live there any longer? And that's just a, I mean, obviously for West Sacramento, it's horrible, but just as a public policy, the idea that people, that people will just leave the floodplains and move somewhere else ignores that there are plenty of risks to move to the fire zones or to earthquake areas. There are very few risk-free locations to live, but floodplain managers are really only interested in floodplains. And if folks were to move out of West Sacramento and the park and downtown Sacramento and other floodplains in the Sacramento region and choose instead to live in Roseville or Galt or elsewhere, the impacts on climate change and on sprawl and on air pollution and on physical activity and other things that will also reduce their, their, their health are pretty severe. So we've made this case pretty consistently, but I think this, the FEMA rule right now still goes too far, so we got the mayors to agree to weigh in on this. We have not weighed in as a city yet, so we'll need to do the same thing, but to, to comment on the FEMA rule, the proposed rulemaking for FEMA to make sure that this doesn't go, it's an appropriate area of focus that it not go so far as to mean that the federal government can't invest in a hospital in West Sacramento or levees in West Sacramento or highways or streetcar or other projects. So with that, then, if there's no other reports, item 1C is appointments to boards and commissions, and that's just, just for the council and the clerk, not intending to make any additional appointments, since all we have at this point are alternates, not intending to make any additional appointments prior to, since all the terms conclude in after the election anyway, which is only, only a month away, or I'm sure the mayor can tell us how many minutes away it is, but so, so I wouldn't anticipate any additional appointments coming forward before that time. All right, we have before us the consent agenda, which is items 2 through 9. Are there any items to remove or any items for separate question or comment? Five. All right. Then item five is consideration of proposed modifications to the inclusionary housing program. Mayor Protam Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, as I was reading the item, I just wanted to understand a little bit more about, I understand simplifying the program, and I'm completely supportive of that. I was just wondering what was happening, what would happen to the affordable units, the home, the owned units? What would happen if they went at market rate? Do we, do we still have affordable units available, or are they then no longer in the program? Just like, just want to understand a little more.
Sure. So as you pointed out, the changes that we are proposing would only affect the for-sale aspect of our inclusionary housing program, and yes, you are correct. The changes would allow owners upon resale to sell those units at market instead of holding them as part of the inclusionary housing program. Now, by doing that, we would also be able to recapture the existing inclusionary housing notes, and we would be looking at other ways to achieve affordable homeownership for low and moderate income households. So the key point that I'd like to make about this is that we're not abandoning affordable homeownership, we're just looking for other ways to more efficiently and effectively produce units and allow affordable homeownership.
Okay.
So if I, if I purchased one of these homes under the, under the Affordable Housing Program, some of these 20 years ago, and I'm now selling it for whatever reasonably inflated rate is at that point, what's the, do I, how much is this, are we recapturing through the note or?
We are recapturing through the note, the principal amount of the note. There is also a shared appreciation portion to that note. So we would also capture a portion of whatever appreciation and value accumulated during the times that that unit initially sold and the new market value of the unit.
And what's that, I'm sure it's in the, I'm sure it's in what you gave us, but what's the share of the appreciation or how does it work?
The share varies. The share varies depending on the initial amount of the note. So each, each unit has a set amount, a principal amount, and based on that principal amount and the original market value, we set that shared appreciation. So it's going to vary depending on each unit.
Okay. So in the example that you gave in the, in the staff report about, you know, a particular sale, what was, what were the, could you describe the numbers there, like it's the original, the original sale and how much the owner, how much appreciation the owner was able to, or would have been able to achieve?
So it wasn't, the, the example that we gave was an example of how we had to reduce our existing promissory note to make that resale happen, again, because of the restrictions on the combined loan-to-value ratios. The units are still sold at below market, but they still have to account for our inclusionary note, and that's where we are running into problems when the lenders do their underwriting and they have to account not just for the new first mortgage, which because they are low-income buyers, they typically come in at, already at 95, 97% loan-to-value. When you add on top of that our notes, it takes the combined loan-to-values to 120, 130, when those are typically limited at 95, 100 or 105% at the max.
So if, but if that was, if that restriction was off, I guess, what, what magnitude of appreciation, appreciation might you expect from, from some of these sales?
It, it could be fairly significant, especially for the low-income units. We have, when the program was originally started, we had both low and moderate income units. The moderate income units were priced still lower than market, but not, the difference was not as much. It was usually around $10,000, $15,000 difference. The low incomes could be 50, 60, 70, over $100,000. It just depends on when they were originally sold. An example are the REVA units. The REVA units, at one point, they were priced at over $300,000, and our affordable prices were in the low 200s or high 100s. So you can see the disconnect there and why we're having so many issues.
So part of the reason I ask about this is that we, we, I don't think we've done a, no one's done a good job of really accounting for the, the wealth effect of this sort of a program. So we're making the changes because we need, because we have to, because it doesn't work otherwise, and that, so it all makes sense just for itself, but it's also, I mean, for those buyers, the extent that they have a significant increase in their total amount of wealth and their ability to, you know, finance going to, maybe, you know, maybe for the first time sending a child to college or other, other sorts of things that increased their level of financial, financial standing. Because it's not part of the Affordable Housing Program itself, we often don't account for that, and we should, because it, you know, it is possible that you, in a neighborhood or in a community, that you have a level of poverty that's here in, in year one and a level of poverty that's, that's lower in year 10, and that may be as a result of displacement and gentrification, it may also be that those, those, those poor people from year one are less poor or not poor today, and that is, that's actually quite, that's quite a significant improvement, and it's quite a, a good accomplishment for a public policy intervention, but because our focus is always around, around the, sort of the proportion of folks who are in poverty as though it should always be, you know, it's always the same, we sometimes miss that. So I hope we're, we're keeping account, not, like, not name and social security number, but in keeping account of the wealth effects that we are having for families who, who may, who five or 10 or 15 or 20 years ago qualified for low-income housing, had a very low and medium income, and are now able to realize, you know, potentially $100,000 or $200,000 worth of appreciation. That's not an insignificant benefit in terms of, of the well-being and, and reducing income and wealth inequality in our community. Okay, thanks. All right, any other questions on the consent? Any further discussions or motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protam Sandin and seconded by Councilmember Ledesma. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, cheering none? That motion carries. Consent agenda is adopted. Item 10 is consideration of Resolution 16-60 for exception to the 180-day wait period for hiring a retiree as temporary extra help employee. Mr. Laurel?
Okay, so I'm like the fourth-string staff person on this report, but.
How did this get to?
You're always first string.
I'm Moonlight as a natural person.
Are there only four people in administrative services?
So this item is only necessary to be on the regular agenda because of a PERS rule that if it's within 180 days you bring back an annuitant, has to be on the regular agenda. So Mr. Cars is the subject of this report, and we are hoping to bring him back as an annuitant to work mainly on some needs at the port. He is one of the only people that understands the port's intricacies in terms of the electrical system. There's a training opportunity also with new staff.
Is there an objection to, is there a motion on this? I mean, you're required to present it under, in, not on a consent item, I suppose, but we're not required to have an extensive.
No.
Right.
No.
Okay, so it's been moved by Mr. Johansson and seconded by Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you.
There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, cheering none? Motion carries.
That had no reflection on your fourth-string status on that, by the way.
Back to the bench, please. Item 11 is consideration of Resolution 16-56 approving the application for youth soccer and recreation development program grant funds for Bright Park improvements, and Resolution 16-59 improving the Bright Park master plan improvements mitigated declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program and other actions to implement Bright Park improvements. Ms. Michael.
Good evening, Mayor Cabaldon, members of the council. Tracy Michael with the Parks and Recreation Department. I'm very pleased to be presenting information to you tonight for your consideration in submitting a grant application for funding for Bright Park improvements, along with a series of other actions for your consideration to comply with the grant requirements. So what I wanted to do is just talk a little bit about the grant. This is a unique, one-time funding opportunity from the state of California Parks and Rec Department. Their Office of Grants and Local Services is the one making the youth soccer and recreation development program available. The objective of the grant is to foster development of new youth recreation opportunities in underserved communities. The grant funding statewide is $26 to $27 million. The maximum grant request is $1 million per project site. There is no minimum request amount, and the grant deadline is November 1st. So the grant does require that the scope of work include new youth recreation opportunities, so it can't just be refurbishment of an existing type of youth recreation facility. For purposes of this grant, recreation is defined as soccer, basketball, baseball or softball, only those sports. You also have to demonstrate 30-year property control from the date the grant's awarded and the anticipated award dates, July of 2017. I included a list of the grant evaluation criteria only to highlight that demographics and community challenges are the top two categories, they assign the most points to the evaluation process, which is important in considering which site to focus on for the grant improvements. Bright Park provides a lot of opportunities as it relates to the grant requirements and the evaluation criteria. The demographics in the Bright Park neighborhood are well-aligned with the target populations for the grant. There's a focus on looking at areas with high youth crime, and over the past two years, which is the time period we're looking at for a lot of the statistics that go into the grant application, 44% of youth crime that occurred in the city was in Beat One, which includes the Bright Broderick neighborhood. We already have a master plan in place for Bright Park that creates that roadmap for future improvements, and the entire city uses Bright Park, so not only do we have an opportunity to make improvements that will benefit the local neighborhood, but also provide citywide benefits. We also have a track record at Bright Park of completing projects. We had the Disney Kaboom project completed recently. We have Phase 2 improvements underway, and it also demonstrates our capacity to work with the school district on our, on joint projects. And that also is one of the challenges with this, with this grant opportunity, is that the property is owned by the school district, and we have a current joint use agreement in place with the district, 20-year agreement, and that was approved in December of 2015, so we actually have less than 20 years left on that agreement. To be eligible for this grant, we need to apply for an amendment to that, or we need to amend that agreement. So just a little update on Bright Park. As I mentioned, the Disney Kaboom play area was completed, along with new sidewalks, concrete curb, drainage, new ground covering and fencing along Carey Street. Immediately adjacent to that are Phase 2 improvements, which are anticipated to be underway in 2017. That will include a new restroom building, large group picnic area with shade, drinking fountain, onsite parking to accommodate approximately 40 spaces, lighting and landscaping, street crossings along Carey Street, and a potential new basketball court. We did include one basketball court in the Phase 2 design work, but moving forward with that will depend on the ultimate budget when the bids come back in. In looking at the proposed improvements to include as part of the grant application, we, we looked at the eligible uses, first of all. We knew we had to focus on youth recreation opportunities. We, we had a master plan, and we wanted to be consistent with the master plan, and we also wanted to look at what we could accomplish with $1 million to make sure that we had whole recreation components that would generate the benefits that would make us competitive for the grant. We wanted to make sure that we looked at improvements that, if made, wouldn't impede other activities from taking place. So if you were to pursue something in the middle of the park right now, we wouldn't have enough money with $1 million to make all of the improvements, so any improvement made would hinder the existing uses, which is a track and field area. So, so based on that, we are proposing two areas for improvement. The first would be on the upper left-hand corner of the, the image, new soccer fields that is consistent with the Bright Park master plan. The first field would be the largest field, what's called a U-19, an age 19 and under field, it's a full-size field, that could also be used to accommodate 12 smaller U-6 fields for the six and unders, which is really important because right now. for the six-and-unders, which is really important, because right now, they've shifted the approach to the younger age groups for soccer. They're required to have smaller teams, which means they have more teams, and they need more space for playtime. We also have a second field. It's a slightly smaller U-12 field that can accommodate two U-8 fields or up to seven smaller U-6 fields, so providing a lot of flexibility. As part of that project, we would be removing the dated play structure and the existing basketball court and the picnic table area. In its place, we would also be constructing, on the other side of the park, two new basketball courts that would have fencing and lighting, possibly play lighting for programmed use only, and then turf replacement with water-conserving hybrid Bermuda, which there is a water conservation component to this grant. There is also a community outreach requirement for the grant. It requires community outreach focusing on six target groups: local nearby residents and nearby businesses, community-based stakeholders and nonprofits, our public agency partners, and potential users of the park. It also requires that we report on outreach completed in the past two years. So unfortunately, a lot of the outreach that was done for the Bright Park visioning and master plan process occurred outside of that window. But out of respect for all of that outreach and being careful and not trying to get too far ahead of this grant application process, we came up with a couple of approaches for reaching out to the community. One was meeting with community organizations just to share with them this grant opportunity and to revisit the master plan in terms of making sure that the priorities established in that document were still valid. We had onsite discussions with the park users. We have been out there on Saturday mornings, meeting with folks who are using the park. And we also created an online survey that had questions targeted for the grant, but also had some more general recreation questions that we hope to be able to use for future grant applications and our park master plan update. It's, we've had the online survey available for a few days now, and we have almost 400 responses so far. So we've gotten some really good feedback that validate the improvements that we are considering as part of the grant and also the improvements that were identified in the Bright Park master plan. So we have also gotten feedback on some uses that are part of the master plan but are not eligible under this grant. Strong interest in replacing the existing restrooms, strong interest in a shade structure over the Disney Kaboom play area, strong interest in refurbishing the tennis courts that are located adjacent to the Club West Teen Center. In the city, we don't have publicly accessible tennis courts. You need to be a member of our rec center, and so there's an interest in having publicly accessible tennis courts. We can't, we can't incorporate those into this grant application, but we are working on exploring ways that we might be able to move forward with those, and would like to come back to council in early 2017 with some funding strategies for those. The joint use agreement with the school district, as I mentioned, was approved in December of 2015. It had a 20-year term, no renewal options, and it actually had termination language that was fairly flexible. This grant application requires a 30-year term from the date the grant's awarded, so we actually would need an amendment that accommodates more than 30 years. We are proposing with the amendment to include renewal options, two five-year renewal options, as well as termination language that's consistent with the grant requirements. And the grant basically wants to see, or the state wants to see, that you can't terminate without cause. So in the amendment language, we included cause language that provides an opportunity, if there's a material breach of the agreement, there's a 90-day cure with appropriate notice. And it also provides the opportunity for the school district to notify the city with a three-year advance notice if they need to use the site for another district purpose. And when we had discussions with the school district at their last board meeting, there were some concerns raised about what if the district needs to use the site for another purpose in the future? They don't anticipate that at all, but in the event that should come up, they wanted to see some flexibility built into the amendment language. We have shared the amendment language with the school district, and based on feedback received from council tonight, we can, we plan to meet with them next week at their board meeting. Environmental, we had initial study and mitigated neg-dec prepared to include implementation of the Bright Park master plan. So the scope of work in that document includes not only the Phase Two improvements that will be underway in spring, but also the improvements considered as part of this grant application. It was circulated for 30 days, minimal comments received, and we have included as attachments three and four, the mitigated negative declaration, as well as the mitigation and monitoring and reporting plan. And attachment five is the resolution formally approving those documents. So for the budget, based on the scope of work and our cost estimates, we think that the, the improvements warrant the full maximum grant amount request of a million dollars. Match funds are not a requirement for this grant, but if you provide them and you focus all of the grant funds on construction costs for the recreation facilities, then you receive a priority standing. So either you get zero points or you get five points. There's nothing in between. So to position ourselves to be most competitive for this grant, we are proposing match funds be, be approved for this grant application. We have a total project cost of a little over 1.3 million dollars. If we receive a million dollars of grant funding, we would need city match funds in the amount of 350,000 dollars. So in summary, staff recommends approving Resolution 16-56, which approves the application for the Youth Soccer and Recreation Development Program grant funds in the amount of a million dollars, authorizing 350,000 dollars to be used as city match funds for the grant that would come from two sources: the West River View Settlement Funds, a not-to-exceed amount of 300,000, and the City ADA Work Order Funds, a not-to-exceed amount of 50,000. Additionally, we recommend authorizing the city manager to approve Amendment One to the city-school district joint use agreement and substantially the form presented, and also approving Resolution 16-59, which is approving the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigated monitoring and reporting plan for the Bright Park master plan improvements. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, then, with the staff presentation concluded, are there questions or comments from council?
Yeah, Kristoff. Tracy, what if the school district doesn't cooperate? And how, how does that work?
Then we are not eligible for the grant.
Okay, so no monies would be appropriated, or no monies would be spent unless the school district moves forward?
Correct.
And they had some issues, or they had some concerns when you first presented this to them. What were those, what were the issues, other than future use or something else?
There was general support to move forward with the grant application, to, you know, have this level of investment, to leverage resources to make improvements in Bright Park. But the, the concerns that were raised were just to make sure that the, that the termination language provided enough flexibility for the school district at some point in the future, that if they needed to terminate for cause, they could. And that was, that was really the, the major issue that was raised in our discussion with the board.
Was it brought up that they would, if there's matching funds that are required for the 300,000 dollars, that each entity could put in, we'll say, 150?
We did not discuss that.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Tracy, for the presentation. I think, you know, a general comment and a couple of questions around the opportunity of the, of the grant. First of all, we're, I'm glad we're always looking. We found this grant that became available, but the nature of it is, is it really as narrow as for soccer, basketball, and, I missed one, softball?
Baseball.
Baseball and softball, right? So is it, is it, really have to stick to that? Now, now I know, based on the Bright Master Plan that we had contemplated, there was soccer fields, kind of re-aligning them and making sure that the, you know, they were being used for soccer anyway, so making sure that there was a realignment. So this fits into that scope, but it has to be very tightly used for those types of purposes, correct?
It does. We had a technical meeting with the state to clarify that, and they highly suggested that not only do we focus only on those, those sports, but that we, we don't even request to use the grant funding for support services, like, for support improvements, like restrooms. They wanted to see all of the grant funding go towards those specific recreation activity improvements.
Which leads to my second question, which is, now, my girls are a little older now, but when they were playing soccer there, there was, it's already intensified use because of all the soccer that goes on there, and certainly we know the bathroom situation. But one of the other areas that we've been, we've heard about in the past is just the parking area, which I know was, again, part of the, the master plan sort of contemplated. So while I'm supportive, kind of, like, this is what we had always talked about doing, is, you know, leveraging funds we have, and it's gonna have, we're gonna have to kind of take the implementation of the Bright Master Plan as we get it. And we have a opportunity to go up to a million dollars, I think, of funding for this, which we've, I think we're gonna try to max out. It's just we can't forget those other intensi, I know you've articulated the other, the restroom and everything else that are on the, I was worried as we, you know, as, let's not forget, that was part of it, too, for the, for the neighbors in the area, who, you know, parents are parking wherever they can park to get their kid to the soccer fields on time, which is, it's a great amenity, but we're gonna have to kind of keep our eye out for other opportunities to fund that as well. So that's the only question I have. Thank you.
Mr. Johansson?
I just have a comment. We could make, oh, yes. So, yeah, I just wanted to, to emphasize, I know there's a lot of folks that are looking at the groupie money, and over the course of time, we've talked about how to, how we can use that to do more with that money than just what's in that fund. And so this is an example of using potentially just 300,000 of those funds for a 1.3 million dollar project. So, and I know more of these are going to be coming along, but I think that's, bears to be emphasized.
Mayor Protam Sandin.
Thanks, and that was a great segue, because my question's actually about the balance of the groupie, groupie funds. So if, and I know we were just given a memo on this, but how much does that, what's the balance, then, that we would have to lever, potentially leverage or use?
If we use the full 300,000, which is a not-to-exceed amount, so our goal is to try to get under that if we can, you'd still have 2.358 million left.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thanks for the, the comment and the question on that, because the, is your estimate of the 350...
Conservative.
In terms of what's necessary to get the five points? Is that, I mean, would we have a good chance at the five points with 250, or had, did you get pretty clear message from the state that 350 would be the...
No, it's not about the dollar amount, it's about how you're using the grant funds. So when we looked at how we could max out the million dollars in hard construction costs, that just, that put us over a million for total project costs. So we, we may need less than 350,000 at the end of the day, but based on our cost estimates and trying to be conservative, we felt that that was a number that, you know, we could move forward with and feel good about. It's, if you, if you try to get that number down, what we have to do is then look at the two components of the grant application. And it costs almost a million dollars just to do the soccer component. So you could, you could omit the basketball courts, but what's hard about that is to make the soccer improvements, you're eliminating the existing basketball court. And we don't want to have a project that creates new opportunity at the expense of another opportunity. So that's, that's just, that's kind of where the numbers landed.
Okay, now that makes sense. I, I'm just, I'm hawkish about making sure we have as much money in the fund to match future opportunities, because this is a fantastic one and exactly what we were hoping to accomplish with our strategy with the, with the funds, and so we just, we want to make sure we have the opportunity to finish out the master plan. And, and so 2.3 million dollars left is still substantial, but it's not, even at these rates, actually, it's not enough for us to complete the whole master plan. So we're gonna have, we're gonna have to hit more of these and get even, even a better ratio in the future in order to build out the whole, the whole part. But this, this is fantastic work. Both, I mean, identifying it for sure, but the, just the, the analysis, the work, the actual project is really outstanding, and it's a good use of, I mean, it's, it's very smartly tailored to the application, so I'm glad you showed us the points and all of that, and the emphasis on, you know, that a lot of what we do in the city is going after the winnable opportunities, even if it's not the number-one thing that we want to see. I mean, it may, it may be that the, the shade structure on the, on the playground, on the Disney play area is more important than one additional soccer field. It may be that that is the case, but that's not fundable. So it's better to apply for the money that we can get and keep, keep biting away until we get, until we get to our, the big objectives. That's how, that's how most of our successes have happened. So I appreciate the, the, both the focus in that way and also the transparency about how, how that has been, been, been done. And also the, the approach that you're taking on outreach. You know, I've, I've said this a few times, I do, I hate going back to people and saying, "So what would, what do you think should happen at Bright Park?" Again, you know, when we just asked them two years ago, and two years before that, two years before that, and just create, it reinforces the idea that my, my feedback doesn't really matter, because you're just gonna come back with something new. And so I can see you've made every effort to try to frame the mandated outreach in a way that, that begins with and builds off of and respects, as you said, the significant work, going back to the Brighton-Broderick visioning process that we did a decade ago through, through the master planning process. If we didn't have the master plan, it would be hard, we wouldn't be able to do these kinds of projects. And I think it is important for folks who've, who've worked so hard on that, on that plan to realize that in the absence of a master plan, I mean, other communities can't apply for this money, because they don't know what they, they don't know what they want to build, how much it costs, what it would take to maintain, and we do, because we have a complete master plan that brings it all together. And then Mayor Protam Sandin and I both, we talked about this with the school, trust, school board trustees at the last two-by-two meeting, and just want to acknowledge the super, the strong support for this from the superintendent, Lynda Luna, and from both of the trustees that are on the two-by-two, Katie Viegas and Sarah Kirby Gonzalez, who, at that meeting, after hearing your presentation, were very strongly committed to advocate for, for this, at the, at the board. Of course, we, you know, as, we, we are a board that also controls property, and, and I think we understand, I mean, that we've had issues where we've agreed to use as a property, that we, and we don't want to, we don't want to agree to, you know, let somebody use one of our pieces of property on, say, Third and C for a parking lot forever. You know, we want the ability, we, you ought to have the ability to make sure that if it's necessary for us for future police station or something, that we have the ability to accomplish that, and for them, if for whatever reason their enrollment skyrockets in the bright neighborhood that they have, and they have, and they have to build a new school, that they shouldn't have to go buy another piece of property. So it's, it's a reasonable set of questions for them to be asking, but the amount of progress that's been made with the board as a whole, I think, is reflective of their, of their, of their collective support for the project, for our, for our, for our joint work on Bright Park overall. And so I, as we proceed, I hope, you know, the city manager will continue to, and we will at the two-by-two as well, but to communicate our appreciation for their, for their enthusiasm and willingness to keep collaborating, to try to, you know, brute-force these improvements one, at one at a time, and doing what it takes quickly in order to, to be competitive for these outside funds.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, is there a motion? Mr. Johansson?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the staff's recommended action.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Johansson and seconded by Mr. Kristoff. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, and any opposed, during none. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 12 is consideration of a workshop on parking strategies for the Bridge District. Mr. Doherty?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Chris Doherty, Public Works Department. The item before you, in front of you this evening, Chris, sorry, sorry, is a workshop on the parking strategies for the Bridge District. When the initial developments in the Bridge District were constructed, the projects were allowed to meet some of their parking requirement on-street to incentivize development. This was intended to be a short-term solution until the parking, until new parking facilities were constructed in the district. To facilitate the on-street parking, the city enacted the Residential Permit Parking Program, Area C. This allowed city staff to track and manage the on-street parking spaces associated with these developments. The nature of residential parking is that it's long-term storage of vehicles overnight and for long periods of time. While this strategy met the early needs of the, the developing district, this has left limited availability for short-term parking for the emerging commercial and bridge, uses in, in the Bridge District. To address this issue, staff is recommending a multipronged approach to transition the on-street parking from the long-term residential vehicle storage to short-term parking that serves the current and future commercial uses in the Bridge District. These recommendations, there are three recommendations in front of you. The first one is to... The first one is to allow the Residential Permit Parking Program, Area C, to expire when it naturally is supposed to expire in March 31st of 2017, and to not renew the permits, and to concurrently finish the construction of a new interim surface parking lot on the Warehouser parcel at Fifth and Bridge Street. Staff is currently working to process and design that project. Item two of this evening's consent calendar item, address the need to expedite the, the building and the design of that, of that parking lot. If any anticipated, unanticipated, excuse me, delays occur in the construction of the parking lot, staff will return to City Council to seek direction for interim solutions. Highlighted in red here would be the location of the, the Warehouser lot. The second recommendation is to re-sign the remaining streets to the following. Garden Street, here highlighted in yellow, would be reverted, or would be just two-hour parking, but remove the exemption to the residential permit, parking permits, and then would also, it would be then free parking from 10:00 p.m. at night until 8:00 p.m. in the morning, unrestricted parking. The remainder of the streets, here highlighted in purple, would be limited to 90-minute parking, and then would be unrestricted, again, from 10:00 p.m. until 8:00 a.m. And then the, to deploy parking meters throughout the district, mostly in the areas of purple. Staff is still researching the type of parking meters and the, the type of meter itself that we would, that would best suit the city's needs. There are a lot of different regimes and hardware available right now, and we anticipate that we'd be coming back to City Council at a later date with more information to make that decision. And the final recommendation is to ensure that there's a proper mechanism for visitor parking for the residents of the area, to remove the current visitor pass regime that we are using and move to a self-print program that would allow the residents in the area to use a visitor pass as, as they need to, but also for the city to monitor and make sure those are not being overutilized and, and undermanaged. So, this concludes my presentation this evening, I'm available for any questions you may have.
All right, are there questions at this time? I'd point out, we're, we're dealing with this in the, in the Bridge District, this is, this is largely, though, our first on-the-ground implementation of our entertainment zone parking, you know, how to deal with parking in the new development areas that don't have, that, that are, that aren't, where there's not four-car garages and four-car driveways, but, but, but are not subject to residential permit parking, because they're, they're not, they, they didn't exist prior to the, to the uses that are generating parking demand. So, what we're, and part of, part of, part of what this effort is, is try to figure what's the right regime for Pioneer Bluffs and for, for other parts of the entertainment zone as well, that's the one that's live. Mr. Ledesma?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Chris, for the presentation and bringing this back. First of all, on the recommendations, these aren't, these aren't, the way they're presented, these aren't separate of each other, there's three ways to view parking concurrently, if you could be correct, just to clarify?
Yeah, each, each recommendation can stand on its own, but
Correct.
They work very well together
Together.
As one regime to be implemented at one time.
Right, and I think it's just the, the nature of how it's presented makes it sound like you have one of three choices, when in fact, we want all three, right?
Correct.
So, but, but, or we may want all three, but which, which is what I want, actually. So I appreciate the, the work on this, I know we talked about this a few weeks ago, and sort of laying the groundwork of what this, what this might mean, because it has been a bit confusing for residents and, and maybe our approach to the parking, while early into the Bridge District's formation and build-out, you know, we're trying to send, trying to get the right balance of accommodating residents and their visitors, while also make, planning for actual commercial activity, as, as, you know, I see dirt being moved in for the Rivers Edge Project, and, and you see other activity that's happening around the barn, and that, and that, that's what we want. So, having this conversation now and being very clear about the direction we want to go as we go to implement is gonna be, from, is gonna be important. On, on, recommendation one, part one on this, it's just a language thing, I think we talked about this a little bit before, but around the, the parking program is, we're, we're just gonna let those expire, there's, there's not even opportunity to renew, so it's just that program ends, and then we're gonna go forward with a new program, so to say, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then on the, the surface parking, I think at one time, with the 255 spaces we'll have there, and residents will be able to, residents and visitors will be able to have parking opportunities in that lot, it's just a public lot, right? It's just a very city-run public lot. But will there, will there be opportunities for residents to, you know, reserve a spot? Will there be reserved spacing in there, or that being, is that?
Yeah, we could, we could, with the, we could build a regime where the residents could definitely reserve a spot in there, plus it'll have sufficient parking for short-term uses as well.
Okay.
But with the availability of all the street parking around there, also ideally metered, would free up all the needed parking for that area, at least for the short term.
Okay. But if I could, I mean, to clarify, that's a paid parking lot, so that'd be for hourly and somebody get a? No, I, I understand. Okay. Yeah. I, I understand that part, I just want to make sure that residents that are, that maybe are paying for that in advance or whatever, that, that they have that opportunity, because if there's a big event going on, then, you know, do they have a spot where they can get back to? On the other part, and, and part two of this, the 10:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. available time, and I, I think I asked this question before, but it's consistent with what occurs on, on typical urban parking, it's just open, we, I know City Sacramento is now going paid parking till, I think it's 10 o'clock now, correct?
Yeah.
So we're being consistent, so that there's no, from an experience standpoint, it's similar, right?
Yeah, we are, we chose the 10 o'clock level because of the River Cats parking around there, we didn't want it to affect the River Cats parking in the, in the lots.
Okay.
But yeah, to have it, to have it unrestricted overnight is very similar to other regimes in other urbanized areas.
Okay. And then, on, on item three, I think, as we get into the visitor passes and, and the opportunities to self-print, the self-print system that that presents, how, I mean, again, I'm kind of thinking, I'm not, it's, it has to work for everybody, and so how the self-printing will work, I mean, technically, how will it work? I mean, well, you go online and you, you produce it, and it goes to, you, you actually have to print something at your home to get the pass?
Correct, there are a couple of different ways of doing it. The, the way that I've been testing currently, you, you log in, your login is associated with your address, so it knows how many it's issued to that address, and you can self-print a piece of paper and put it in your dashboard, and that's good for a 24-hour period and expires in 24 hours.
Okay. And for, and, and is there an alternative way to get those passes? Do we come to City Hall to get them? For those that may not have a printer, that's what I'm thinking up to.
Sure, we could make some accommodations for that.
I just want to make sure.
We could put a kiosk at, at City Hall or something to that effect.
Okay. Those are my only questions for now, but thanks for bringing this back.
Mr. Johannesburg?
Yeah, just to follow up with Councilmember Ledesma, on the, on the self-printing, are there safeguards against forgeries? Creating your own and sticking it in your, I don't know, you know, if that's gonna be an issue, but it seems like there's some issue there, unless there's a scanner, something that someone could confirm that it's original.
Yeah, we could look into that to see if there's some kind of unique code that could be scanned to see if it's been, been duplicated.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if that's gonna be an issue, but, you know, if it's a 24-hour pass, why not try and create one?
Mayor Protem Sandin?
Thank, thank you for the report. I, I know when we were talking about parking in this area, we, we knew that there, we knew we were gonna come back and look at it, and we knew that, that we're gonna learn from kind of organically watching what was happening, so I, I don't feel uncomfortable, you know, I'd like, I would like, as Councilmember Ledesma mentioned, I would like for us to come to some resolution so that it can be kind of understandable, and, and that we, we've gotten the best solution that can last for some time. I just have, just a couple of questions to understand the kind of extent of the problem we're solving, and one is, how, how many permits are there now, residents, because I'm, if there are more than 255, we might have a problem, I don't know if we, how many we are out there right now.
So right now, with the visitor pass system we have in play, there are approximately 150 hard permit stickers have been issued, and
For residents, those are for residents?
Those are for residents.
Okay.
And then we've issued approximately 150 more visitor passes.
Okay.
But we don't know if those are being used daily, or if they're being used in their intended fashion.
Okay.
So we assume it would be approximately 155 spaces for residential demand right now, that demand, as this area gets more dense and more urban, will diminish, but, so, out of the 255 spaces in the Warehouser lot, figure 150 would be used pretty much for monthly parking at this time.
And it's potential that people could find, some of, some of the residences actually have garages that might get cleaned out so that people don't have to pay for the monthly pass, or something like that could happen, so there may not be the demand that's there right now, because now it's, it's get it.
Correct.
Okay.
The, the housing units, like the Park Moderns, with the exception of seven of them, are not eligible for passes now.
Okay.
So they're not, they're not in this pool. The only exception are the seven larger units that do not have a driveway, that have been issued visitor passes, because they have no other means for guests.
Right, okay, okay, thanks. I just was, again, was just trying to understand the, if we're actually solving enough of the problem, or if there's maybe a bigger one coming. Thanks.
Yeah, those are, those are, I mean, obviously, I, I see it very clearly, but, you know, from, from being there, but the, we approved, I mean, we're here, I mean, you know, all the comments are, are correct, and we're, we're learning, and this is a good test area for, for the broader entertainment zone, and for what we're doing in, in Pioneer Bluffs and elsewhere, but we're, I mean, we're here because we, the council approved, the planning commission approved, a, a significant reduction in the parking requirements for the homes and the apartments, and, and Mr. Kristof was the first one to say, "I, I don't know about that." No, they're, they're gonna need more parking, people are gonna want to park. And people are parking at higher, at significantly higher rates than was anticipated in the land use approvals, and that's not sustainable for the, for the, for the neighborhood, not even close, and, you know, there, and, and lots of bad incentives have been created as a result. And I think, as we said in that September meeting of last year, that the Residential Permit Parking Program was not, was, it was created in 1980, I'm sorry, 1996 or '07, I think?
Ninety-six.
And, but it was created for the purpose of ameliorating the impact on street parking in an existing neighborhood from a project that invades, essentially. So you buy, you buy a home, and you, you create your lifestyle, you're living on Clarendon or Meadow or somewhere near the high school, and then sudden, near the school, and then suddenly, the school district converts it into a high school and doubles the enrollment, and now there's a million people parking on the street, and, but your whole, you know, the house has been in your family for two generations, what are you supposed to do? And so that was what the Residential Permit Parking was created for, not for a situation in which you're moving to a brand-new area and making a choice to live there based on the parking regime that is there. All right, so, so it was not really the right, the right use of the Residential Permit Parking Program in the first place, and we have situations where folks have, you know, four, two, three, four, five cars per household, or where they're not, they're not purchasing, they're not leasing a parking space in their apartment building, because it's cheaper to just get a permit from the city and park on the street. So it's, it's, you know, we're, everyone's learning, and everyone's adapting, including people who want to park, so I know that a lot of work has gone into, into trying to, you know, continue to improve this and get it to a point where it can be, send the right signals and, and create the right incentives, and then also have enough clarity and, and at least viability for more than six months to be a real, a real program that folks can, can understand, so. I just, the, I think one of the, I was just gonna, in terms of a quest, maybe it's not a question, but the unrestricted parking in the evenings, and you, you've raised this, Mr. Doherty, before, the 10 o'clock time does pose a problem, because to the extent in which, if you can park there for 90 minutes without, without restriction, that essentially means you have an 8:30, at 8:30 you can park, and so for, for quite a few uses that are still happening at 8:30, whether it's a River Cats game, or, or an event at the barn, or a party at the urban beach at the Rivers Edge Project, that will, that has the potential to create some significant demand problems on, on, on the street parking, which is why the, that, that's only ameliorated if there are meters, right? So I think that, you know, the, the recommendations around continuing to, to proceed, to, to work on meters, if you have meters, then you have an effective parking control all the way up until 10 o'clock, and so it has, it does ameliorate that problem. All right, we did have one request to speak on this item, so of course, we're gonna have to ask you to step away and invite Maria Grahlba to the podium.
My question, my question, that can dissolve? Okay, you hear, I think my voice carries well.
It does, but we want to make sure folks at home can hear you on TV as well.
Okay.
Yeah, just stop doing that.
There we go. There we go, it is still green. So, the Residential Parking Permit Program, is my understanding that people are paying for parking permits in their own homes, that, I think that's my understanding from what I, I just heard or what I was told, but anyway, I wanted to go on record as saying that I was here just 15, 20 minutes ago, I came in here early on time, so I could be on, on record to go on, to talk about item number 11 parked in rec, because you said yourself, the groupie funds are controversial, okay? And so, when, apparently, when I got here and, and I stepped outside with the community members that were concerned, you skipped all of this and jumped straight to 11 while I was outside. I wanted to go on public record that I did not get an opportunity to comment on item number 11, which is completely controversial. It's my understanding, and that was part of what I was going to ask you, is if it's true that 65% of the Phase 1 construction ones went towards a-
We've completed with that item, we're now on item 12.
Isn't that convenient for you? Well, did you know, I worked for the state for-
All right, I, I regret that you are unfamiliar with the council's procedures, or the rules that we announce at the beginning of each meeting, and they're posted on our agenda, but it is the standard practice of the council.
Yes, keep the process.
We may have to vacate the room at, at a, in a moment, but it is the standard, procedures of the council, has been for several years, for more than a decade, with respect to the speaking times, so those who were in, who were present at the time of the meeting had the opportunity to speak, and we did not receive a speaking request in time for that, for that component, so. Anyway, we had no further requests on item 12, so are there any further discussion or questions on the parking item? All right, is, this is a workshop only, no motion required, correct?
Yep.
All right, thank you very much. Council Calendar, Ms. Marlin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Here are a couple of, only a couple of dates.
Yes, let's, let's stick to highlights, please, this time.
Coming up on October 14th, Friday, there's the Village Parkway North grand opening, that starts at 10:00 a.m., and then on Monday, October 17th, we have the retirement party for Councilmember Kristof at 5:30 in the Galleria, and then finally, October 24th through 28th is Flood Preparedness Week, and there will be an event at some point during that week, the date is still being worked out, but we'll provide more information as that's forthcoming.
All right, any questions on Calendar? City Manager reports?
Mayor and councilmembers, at the last meeting, we reported the Wurda Bill was approved by the Senate, last-
Last Friday, it was approved by the House on a 399 to 25 vote, and so now that bill, which includes RGRR for our levy project, is going to the President for his, for his consideration. The Y Shuttle, Councilmember Ledesma did not mention it in his comments, but the Y Shuttle was operating last night. Went very smoothly, the ridership was light, but we're monitoring it tonight and the next several activity, or events at Golden One Center to see how that goes. On our end, there's no traffic problems reported to this point. And then finally, Mayor Protem Sandin mentioned the Business Journal Awards in addition to Park Moderns. The Firehouse did get the award. The latest, as we hear, that Burgers &amp; Brew will open for business middle to the late of next month.
All right, any questions on the City Manager Report? City Attorney Report? Staff Direction from members of the council? Seeing none, we have no future agenda item requests. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Johansson moves, and Mr. Ledesma seconds it. The council be adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed or none, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.